I would like to call this meeting of the Public Schools of Robinson County Board of Education meeting to order, November the 12th, 2024, at 6:02 PM. Before, before I get started on the agenda, I would like to, first, I would like to apologize to my family, to my fellow board members, to PSRC as a whole for the negative publicity that have caused. This is an ongoing personal legal matter, and at this time, I cannot speak no more on it, but I do like sincerely apologize for the negative publicity that I have caused. All right, now we have a moment of silence, but before the moment of silence, could you please remember Townsend Elementary's student, Ms. Cruzario Williams, the first grade, that passed away tragically? We got a staff member, Ms. Lisa Hill at Orem Middle School, she passed away in October. Also, we had a custodian that had a head-on collision, Mr. Joseph Taylor, so please remember all of these at our moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. Now we have the pledge, now we have the pledge allegiance by Lummerton High School, JRTC. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, face. Oh, march.
Now we have the adoption by the, of the agenda. A motion being made by Mr. John Simmons, a sacrament being made by Mr. Henry Brewer, all in favor? All opposed? Approval of open session minutes? A motion being made by Mr. Craig Lowry, a sacrament made by Ms. Melissa Osha, all in favor? All opposed? All right, now we will have information items, Veterans Day, Lummerton, Lummerton High School, JRTC.
Good evening Superintendent Board Members, I'm Cadet Captain Zoe Pittman, and I'm here this evening to present a speech on Veterans Day. Veterans Day is a day set aside to thank and honor all those who served honorably in the military in wartime or peacetime. Veterans Day, formerly known as Armistice Day, was originally set as a U.S. legal holiday to honor the end of World War I, which officially took place on November 11, 1918. In fact, Veterans Day is largely intended to thank living veterans for their service, to acknowledge that their contributions to our national security are appreciated, and to emphasize the fact that all those who served not only to those who died have sacrificed and done their duty. Also, by recognizing and honoring these veterans, we allow generations of families and friends to understand and appreciate and have a small glimpse into the sacrifices these fine men and women have given to the United States.
Thank you. Native American Heritage Month by Mr. Robert Mark Dees.
Good evening Chairman Leach, Superintendent Williamson, and fellow board members. I'm Mark Dees, I work with Indian Education through the Public Schools of Robinson County, and we bring you greetings on behalf of Dr. Connie Locklear, who was unable to be here tonight. President Biden and Governor Cooper has declared that November is American Indian Heritage Month. This is a time set aside to celebrate the rich heritage, history, culture, and contributions of American Indian. On October the 30th, the Indian Education Staff kicked off Indian Heritage Month with a Native Indigenous Foods Day. This is a way of sharing our culture, our tradition, with all of our board members, YDS staff, tribal leadership, and other stakeholders in our community. The YDS has planned various activities at their respective schools, and this document should have been shared with you. We are also including on our Facebook page pictures of activities and of the YDS in a way of thanking them for their dedication to the Public Schools of Robinson County and providing cultural responsive instruction. Once again, on behalf of our Director, Dr. Connie Locklear, and our Indian Education Parent Committee and Indian Education Staff, thank you for your support of Indian Education and the work we do as we prepare and support another layer of instruction for our students. Thank you, no way.
Now we have the recognition for support of Western North Carolina Buncombe County Schools, Dr. Sheri Hinden, Hinden, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Good evening Chairman Leach, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, and Board Members. We would like to take this opportunity to recognize five individuals. We have a picture that has been presented on the screen. We have these five individuals that joined a team of representatives in the Sandhills region. We would like to thank Dr. Williamson and Ms. Freeman for taking the lead to make sure we had representation. Buncombe County, as they transitioned back to school, they, they asked for support, so we were able to provide two social workers, two school counselors, as well as a bus driver to make sure that we supported Buncombe County as they transitioned back to school. So these individuals spent two days in the school, they helped with the transition of the staff back to school, and then the following day, which was a Friday, they helped with the, with the students, with the students back in the school. So we would like to present them with a plaque today, so I will call them up, and then we will have some comments from the group during their time in Asheville. So we will start with our bus driver, Mr. Matthew Chavis. Ms. Brittany Evans. I'm sorry. And Ms. Brittany Evans is a social worker at Lummerton High School. Ms. Regina Fuller, social worker at Orem School. Ms. Gina Jacobs, school counselor at Union Elementary. And Mr. Wendell Acosta, school counselor at St. Paul's Elementary School. And at this time, we are going to ask Mr. Wendell if he will step to the podium and just provide a few comments about their experience.
Thank you. I want to say it was an honor to be asked. For my Christian faith, I was, I was thinking about this beforehand, and then the opportunity presented itself, and so I was like, wow, it's just amazing how God opens doors, you know, and then I knew it was up to me or the ones that came with us to walk through that door. So grief counseling or catastrophes and things like that are definitely not any of our fortes. I'll speak for myself especially, but, but just being there speaks volumes, and I think it spoke volumes for Robinson County as well. The, the schools that received us were very welcoming, they were very appreciative, and I tried to pick up some things while I was there, just how they organize for catastrophes and things like that. So it was, it was an honor for the board to support us and to have a bus and make transportation, rooming, and things like that. Even with the rooms, you know, the water, they didn't have clean water. I remember telling my roommate, I was like, hey, it's not that I didn't flush, that's just the, the color of the water, you know, I didn't want him to come in thinking I was a bad roommate from the get-go, and, and it had, you had to boil it, they wanted you to boil it, you know, so they couldn't drink it, and I didn't even want to take a shower, I was just like, I think I'll just take my chances and stick with the bottled water, but, but it was, it reminded me of when we were there, and so, and I hope that they appreciated us being there for them like folks were there for us in our time of need, that's what family does. Thank you.
And again, I just want to say I thank these five individuals and Dr. Williamson and Ms. Freeman for allowing Robinson County to be represented, represented in Buncombe County. Thank you.
Now we have public comments. And this name, Mr. Patrick Bullitt. Mr.?
Dr. Williamson, Mr. Chair.
Excuse me, before you start, Mr. Pat, do you have three minutes? Can you start it off for, you have three minutes?
Yes, sir. Got my stopwatch right here, ready? Dr. Williamson, Mr. Chairman, distinguished board members, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to stand before you tonight. Last October the 10th, I went to my granddaughter's school planning to eat lunch with her, she was a kindergartner at the time. She and I had talked about this for weeks, and we were both looking forward to that time together. While I was standing waiting to be cleared to go to her classroom, I was told that I would not be allowed to eat with her with that day due to COVID concerns. I thought we'd all realize that COVID restrictions had long been lifted and people had essentially returned to life as we knew it before COVID, so I was shocked to hear this. I have not been that disappointed in such a very long time. I was later told that I was, I was a security risk, it was a security risk for me to eat lunch with my granddaughter. I was essentially robbed of being able to enjoy a single lunch with my granddaughter in her one and only year as a kindergarten student. My disappointment has now turned into frustration. Security is not an issue on Grandparents' Day as schools across our county welcomes a flood of grandparents on campus. Why is it that entry to our schools is not a problem on Grandparents' Day, but it, it is a security risk every other day? The answer is simple, because you want grandparents to spend money on book fairs at fundraisers that are being held the same day. Every Friday night, Robinson County, and every Friday night in Robinson County, we welcome thousands of our citizens to high school football games, and we, we were able to somehow to facilitate, to facilitate their safe entry into our stadiums without any problems. Why is this? Again, the answer is very simple, it's because of the tremendous amounts of money at stake and our desires to build up school finances. How is it that you can invoke school safety concerns to prevent a handful of grandparents' grandparents from accessing our schools, but you are able to look the other way during fundraising events that generate tens of thousands of dollars for the Public Schools of Robinson County? This should not be. As a former school board member, I would never do anything to make your jobs harder as you care for our students, but I see this as an easy lift. My ask is not a new initiative. When I was a school board member, we had muffins for moms, we had donuts for dads, and we had Grandparents' Day. These events helped create a pleasant environment that was both inviting, safe, as we all worked together to educate our children. My ask is not an impossible task and is one that is easily in success, has been easily and successfully implemented before in Robinson County schools. Again, if we can accommodate thousands at weekly ballgames, then why can't we accommodate, accommodate a handful of parents, grand, and grandparents eager to help and support our children throughout the year? While attending an awards day last school year at one of my other grandchildren's schools in a neighboring county, the principal stood before the crowd of several hundred people, and she said, and I quote, "You are welcome to this school at any time. These doors swing on welcome, enclosing." County schools do have to be slammed shut, excluding parents and grandparents. Not too long ago, the doors to our schools also swung on welcome, and I have confidence that you can do this once again. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me know when I might be able to receive that information. Thank you.
Next on the list, we have action items, and, oh, no. Next we have action items, and first thing on the list is naming of Lummerton Senior High School basketball court, Mr. Glenn Patterson.
Erica, I think you mailed that information last week, didn't you? Or emailed it?
Yes, sir, it was emailed on Friday. The information was emailed on Friday from your letter. Okay, I'll receive it tomorrow.
Mr. Glenn?
Good evening Chairman Leach, Superintendent Williamson, and Board Members. A formal written request was made by a community group to Mr. Larry Brooks, Principal at Lummerton Senior High School, proposing that the main gymnasium court be named in honor of former Lummerton Senior High School head women's basketball coach, Danny Graham. The request was approved for Lummerton Senior High School to move forward with hosting a community forum for naming of facility. Mr. Larry Brooks posted the dates of the forum on the Lummerton Senior High School website. He also used the 30 Share RoboCall system to inform all parents and students five days prior to the forum. The forum was held on October the 22nd, 2024, at Lummerton Senior High School, Classroom 127. Several people were in, in attendance. Everyone in attendance agreed that we should move forward with naming the gym floor after Coach Graham. As of today, Principal Larry Brooks and the Lummerton Senior High School community has fulfilled all the necessary steps to move forward in naming Lummerton Senior High School main gymnasium court in honor of former head coach Danny Graham. Now each of you should have received a copy of the proposal, as well as all of Coach Graham's accolades throughout his career as coach at Lummerton Senior High School in your board package. Are there any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Manuel?
If this is picky, I apologize. What, what's the difference in naming the court and the gym, the floor and the gym? I, I'm just, explain that to me.
We're gonna let Mrs. Trey explain that to you.
I mean, why not name the gym?
Dr. Manuel, I actually had that question with several constituents in the Lummerton community, and they were all on one accord on wanting to name the court.
I'm sorry.
They were all on one accord of naming the court after him.
Not the gym.
Not the gym, no ma'am, they wanted to name the court. So I was actually at the public forum that they had too as well, and that was unified 100%, there was no backlash whatsoever.
Well, I don't have a problem, but I'm just, this is my, for my clarity, I was trying to understand, why not the whole gym, why just the court?
Isn't, isn't the court at Red Springs named after somebody as well?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, fine.
Mr. Craig, you got something, okay? Mr. Curry?
Just, Dr. Manuel, I understand exactly what you're saying, but it does plead for the opportunity, the gym could be named after someone else, and that's, that's what this does, that sometime, you, you have a gym named after one person, and you have a court named after another person. That does happen, might not make sense, but that, that, that does happen in, with basketball.
My mind is too simple.
Are there any other questions? If not, then at this time, I would like to move forward with the proposal and turn it over to Chairman Leach and the board members for a decision.
This is the action item, so we have to take action on it. Mr. Trey Britt?
I make a motion that we approve the Lummerton High School basketball court, name Danny Graham court.
A motion's been on the table by Mr. Trey Britt, the name of Lummerton Senior High School basketball court, the Danny Graham court, and a sacrament being made by Bradley, Bradley Phillips. All in favor? All opposed? Eyes happy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so that dedication would be this Friday, the gym naming has been completed, correct? Yes, sir, that's correct, will be Friday, Friday night between the girls and the boys basket- Uh, it will be Friday, um, Friday night, uh, between the girls and the boys basketball game. Fairmont will come to Lumberton and they will name it at that time.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, next, we have the sole source vendor CTE equipment by Mr. Bobby Locklear.
Good, good evening, Chairman Leach, Dr. Williamson, board members. So we are asking tonight, we, we have previously approved Meteor to supply the furniture for our new Career Technical Education Center in our planetarium. Uh, since that time, Meteor has acquired a company, Advance Technology Consultants. And this particular company, uh, has over 60 years of experience designing and equipping CTE classrooms and labs. Because Meteor has acquired this company and Meteor is on our state vendor list, we are asking that you approve us to allow Meteor to move forward with equipping our CTE, with the classrooms and labs. We have gone through the proposed equipment list, Mr. Herman and his staff. And Meteor is able to provide us like kind equipment based on what we have proposed before. The biggest difference is if we are able to use Meteor and you grant us the sole source for them, then they will save us approximately $2.5 million.
All right, um, hold on, I've got a couple of questions, Mr. Bobby. First, uh, Dr. Manuel, then we're gonna go Mr. Terry, then we're gonna go Mr. Henry.
Uh, my intent was to vote, make a motion that we approve Meteor. That was my, what I wanted to say.
Okay, uh, well, uh, uh, motion's on the table, but, uh, we got a motion on the table by, uh, before we get the motion, let me see if somebody else got something, come back to you, motion, I'm sorry. Mr. Henry, then Mr. Kirk.
I was also looking at making the motion, but I want to say that, um, I want.
All right, well, let me get the motion first, then we have the discussion, I'm sorry. Uh, but most have been on, emotions is on the table, Dr. Manuel, that we approve, uh, the sole source vendor.
Second.
It's the second, a second being paid by Mr. Henry Brewer, all in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion?
Mr. Terry, got it.
Uh, I'm sorry, let us do this again.
I just wanted to say, Mr. Leach did all, if I'm not out of turn. Oh, that company has done an awesome job with meeting with the construction committee and going through every item in detail and spending a lot of resourceful time. And for them to come up and say, hey, we can save you two and a half million dollars. I think that's accolades for them. Thank you.
Appreciate it, yeah, we, yeah. All right, so we got, we got a motion, we still got a motion on the table, uh, by Mr., this, uh, Dr. Manuel. We got a second by Mr. Henry Brewer, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Mr. Bobby.
Thank you.
Now, we got that surplus, uh, surplus sale by Mr. Hugh Michael Wayne.
Good evening, Chairman Leach, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, board members. In your board packet is a list of vehicles, cafeteria equipment, uh, classroom furniture, items that we no longer need with the school system, the either useful life is over with. So in order to make room, we were requesting that you approve for us to surplus these items and to contract with Meekin's Auction where their Christmas sale on December 27th to sell the items there. We have contracted with Meekin's Auction in the past. Uh, we used to have it on our property. We no longer had the facilities or the space to have the public and to store the items and set up for an auction like we used to. Uh, Meekin's Auction, their commission is 10%, so whatever we sell, they keep 10% and then we keep the rest. The money then goes back to the different pots where it came from. So I'm seeking your permission and approval for the surplus sale and the contract with Meekin's Auction.
Mr. Henry?
I make a motion that we accept the, uh, contract auction. And also, I think it's worded handwritten in that they are waiving a $75, um, fee.
Registration fee, yes, sir.
Registration fee.
I wrote that in there after me and Mr. Meekin stopped.
Great group to work with.
All right, uh, most have been on, uh, motions on the table by Mr. Henry Brewer, do we got a second? Second by Miss Krista Monroe, do we got discussion, Chris? Chris, I got, uh, Ms. Kristy Fields got some discussion.
Is there a minimum threshold for the items on here that we will not go below in the auction or is that totally up to?
No, we don't set them, no. Highest bid gets it.
Okay.
All right, so emotion, uh, emotion's been on the table by Mr. Henry Brewer and it's been a second by Miss, uh, uh, Krista Monroe, all in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Michael Wayne. Now, we will have the district and school improvement plans by, uh, by Dr. Wendy Dorsey Carr and Dr. Deborah Dallas.
Good evening, Chairman Leach, Dr. Williamson and board members. Um, as promised during the last, um, meeting, we have met and collected all the data from, um, the open pu, public survey and there were no comments except one. Um, and so there were no changes to be made. We also met with the district improvement team last Monday to get any additional input before bringing it to the committee. And based on what they shared, it was already things that were in the plan. Um, and so at this time, we're seeking approval of the district and school improvement plans.
Dr. Manuel?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we so approve these plans.
Our motion been on the table by, um, Dr. Manuel, that we approve the school, uh, that we, that we approve the school improvement plans. Have we got a second? A second by Miss Melissa Ocean, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Uh, career, the career development plans, CTE, Doc, uh, Wendy Dorsey Carr and Mr. Herman Locklear.
Good evening, once again, I'm going to let Mr. Herman, um, share more information about the career development plan.
Let me say good evenings, everyone, especially to Chairman, uh, Leach and of course, uh, Dr. Williamson Superintendent and all the other board members. Racist up just a little bit, okay? So the, we've been working on a plan to address the, the new state laws, state mandate, which, uh, state law was 2023-134. And in that, it requires, uh, there, you, you can, you can use it. Uh, it requires that all eighth graders complete a career development plan prior to being promoted to ninth grade. And it also requires that all 10th grade have reviewed their plan, uh, before being promoted to 11th grade. So we're in the process of getting all that in order for, because this will take place this, uh, next school year moving in. So, well, actually, it's this year, but it's, uh, being promoted to the ninth grade next year. So, uh, our platform that we are currently using and have been using for about three years now is Major Clarity. So that's what we, um, are planning to continue to use. Okay? So in that, again, creating a career development plan, and we've been doing this for about three years now, we're meeting with the middle school with seventh and eighth grade. And we do major clarity, they take those self-assessments, as you see, that they need to complete some self-assessments before making that plan. And then, of course, they have a chance to explore some careers with the, uh, Major Clarity software and, uh, some other activities that we do within the district. And we've been doing that already and that's happening in grade six through eight. Okay? Then, as we look at this, grades nine through 12 have an opportunity to align their courses and, uh, make, uh, other plans to that, uh, record activities and, and different things that they're doing and then reviewing that plan in 10th grade. And then, of course, uh, moving on to graduation and, and doing a portfolio. Our timeline, and this is just our implementation timeline that we've laid out. Uh, deadline was October 18th for, um, submitting person of contact at each school. Principals were tasked to do that and, and identifying that staff member that would be accountable for the, um, career development plan roster. That's a checkoff saying that every student has that career development plan. It's all about accountability, so it, we have to make sure that everyone is checked off there. Then, of course, uh, selecting a, um, point of contact to maintain the CDPs, which is career development plans, again, another accountability ross, the roster there. And then, of course, there's a notification must go out to the parents. There's a letter that has been drafted and, and, uh, designed to send to parents and that is due to go out and have, well, actually have already gone out to let them know that the, the, what the law states so that they're not blind, blind, you know, cited by the law saying, my child can't be promoted because they don't have a career development plan. It's already in the letter of that information. And again, uh, the 10th grade piece is in the letter also. Okay? This is just a layout of, of what responsibilities, uh, the schools will have, counselors and teachers. They'll collaborate monthly with lessons that, for eighth graders to complete that career development plan. Uh, the, uh, career development coordinators will also be working with those counselors and teachers to make that happen. New students, uh, that come in after we go through the schools and make sure all of our current eighth graders have a plan. If a new student comes in, those, uh, have to be checked to make sure if they're coming in from another school district, they might already have of within the state, they may have a career development plan. However, if they come from out of state, it might not be a requirement there. And we have to make sure that their name is on the list and it's checked off that they are, um, have completed that plan. And then monthly meetings to review the process and keep an update. Okay? Principal's responsibility again is to, to make sure the, um, POC is submitted by October 18th, uh, communicated to the parents. And then, of course, verifying the accountability roster on, um, on or before April 25th of 25. Okay? Maintaining the roster, um, then, of course, uh, making sure, again, every eighth grader is touched, every eighth grader is accounted for, new people coming in. The parent notification and then, of course, distributing, distributing the information as it is given out. Okay? Uh, of course, it takes the whole village of people to make this happen. Data managers, they have a responsibility to update the records. It has to be put in their records that that student has a career development plan. If there happens to be one that's missing, then they need to notify the counselors and say, hey, look, uh, Johnny doesn't have a plan, what we need to do to make sure he has one. And then, of course, just keeping up with the management of those files. Okay? Then, school counselors, who's gonna be, they'll play a major role in this, uh, working with the career development team and the social studies teachers and especially in the eighth grade, working with them. And Major Clarity is gonna be working with us hand in hand to make sure all of that takes place. Organizing and assembling the, uh, field trips, guest speakers, uh, to support career development. That, that's a part of counselors, career development coordinators and myself and other folks on our staff to make sure that students have an opportunity. My slogan is can't be what you can't see. So therefore, they need to see that and know what it's about before they actually say, I want to become this. Okay? Then, of course, uh, keeping those new students on board. And teachers will, will have an opportunity to incorporate those careers in their lesson plans. And, uh, they'll work with school counselors and career developments to make sure and to use major clarity lessons throughout their, um, throughout their semester. Then the other classroom activities, again, that may, may be like having a bell ringer. Have a guest speaker to come in and, and spend just five minutes at the beginning of the class, not taking a lot of class time, but just to share their information of what it's like to be what they are and how they can become what they are. And then, of course, field trips. Okay? Uh, we've talked already about the notifications to parents. And then, um, parents having the ability to go into major clarity and see that, uh, career development plan in the CDP portal. And then, of course, guidance, monitoring the plan and seeing, you know, evaluating and saying, hey, look, is, are you sure this is what you want to become? This is, you know, uh, where are you in that process? Have you done a job shadowing opportunity? Have you, uh, at least thought about it a little bit more? And be sure that's what you want to, want to do. Okay? Middle school, just to recap this, middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, they, they'll be able to work with the guidance department, with the career development coordinators and other folks in our office to make sure that, um, they know what to put in their plan. And then, of course, in high school, making sure that that is reviewed and that they are able to explore what's in their plan. If I plan to become a rocket scientist, which I'm not, trust me. But if I do plan, then I need to make sure I have an opportunity to see what a rocket scientist is. Because who knows, I might decide that I want to be a surgeon instead, okay? And these are just a list of resources that, that we have available to us that can be sent out to any, anybody at any time. And it tells more about the details of what the plan should include and what the law states and what we have to, to meet the law.
All right, Mr. Herman, I think we've got a couple of questions. Mr. Craig Lowry?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Herman, like you said, this involves a lot of people. It, it sounds great and everything, I like it, but it involves a lot of people to get it done. Now, my question is, uh, to make sure everybody's documented at, let's say, the middle school. I could have took any one of them slides. Who's the person that your department's gonna go to that school and ask? Do we have all this? Cause a lot of people is doing it, but do, do we have somebody we're gonna ask to the school and say, okay, it was your job to make sure all of this was done?
Right. That's, that's why principals had to identify, uh, a person of contact at their campus.
So they've got somebody identified.
Exactly.
To deal with.
Right.
And after that, I will make a motion that we accept this plan as, as presented and got some.
All right, we got one more question, then I'll come back to your motion, Mr. Craig. Mr. Terry?
Hey, Mr. Herman, I appreciate this information. Is this, uh, PowerPoint or this, uh, this documentation that you share with us typically shared with the Business Advisory Council?
Yes, it will be.
It will be after we, after we.
And we, we talked about that, when, we've talked about it in our, in last year's meetings because we knew it was coming down to. So, um, we, we've discussed that with them. We've been in conversation with our business and industry partners that we're getting ready for. And you're cordially invited to attend on November 20th, it's our Career Expo. That's at the Southeastern Act Center. And we've talked to a lot of different business folks about this and how important it is for them to participate so that our students can at least get a general idea of what is offered. Not, you know, not many people see 100 different careers in their lifetime to know what they want to become before they're out there trying to make that decision.
And I noticed that our policy on 2670 states that, um, that there should be some annual report from, from the Business Advisory Council. And I'm guessing that's, that you, that you give that annually?
We do, we do have three meetings a year, but we don't have like a formal report that we give. But all of the other entities, there's a lot of different entities that do pull formal reports, uh, such as, um, the Star Jobs, um, report. That is, that's a state report is given out. My Future in C does a lot of reporting on, uh, business and industry and what they're looking for and, and what the job outlooks are for in there. There's just a number of different pieces that we do incorporate into, uh, our business meetings with our advisory board.
Okay, and the reason I asked that question is because, Mr. Chairman Leach, I noticed that in accordance with our policy, uh, 2670, if you look toward the very bottom, it notes that the, uh, the council shall report back to the board annually uh, on its recommendations for the school system's career and technical education. So, um, if we could maybe work on getting that on our calendar on an annual basis, I'd love to hear from them.
We'll, we'll work on that, appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Herman.
We do, we do have a motion on the table by Mr. Craig Lowry to, uh, to accept the information, uh, the career development plans that's presented by, um, Mr. Herman Locklear. We got a second by Mr. Henry Brewer, all in favor? All opposed?
Thank you. Hey, thank you, Mr. Herman.
Mr. Herman, may I ask a question? So now students will have an electronic portfolio of their work and that's, that's a major change from where we are now, correct?
Right, right. And Major Clarity offers that, uh, that platform where students can. And Major Clarity offers that platform where students can upload that portfolio and before graduating, of course, and I think they have it, is it two years after, two years after they graduate, they still have access to go back and to pull that. So it follows them wherever they go.
Again, all right, thank you, Mr. Herman.
Thank you.
Next, we have the sole source vendors, Sentijix, Learn ED, Explore, Learning, and Kami by Ms. Erica Sessner.
Good evening, Chairman Leach, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, and board members. I included in your packet those vendors that Mr. Leach just identified. And Sentijix, I wanted to say is Identikit. That kind of threw me off, the company name changed. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew what that was for. That's the visitor management system that most of our schools use when staff check in or parents come in. The Learn Ed is fifth through eighth grade science materials. Explore Learning is Gizmo licenses. And Kami is an annotation tool that allows the teachers to make PDF changes to documents to help with instruction.
All right, we got Mr. Dr. Marion, then we're going to get, let's go, Mr. Terry, then we're going to get Dr. Marion.
Thank you, Ms. Erica. My comments aren't necessarily for you, I'm just wondering about our board operations because we just had a curriculum committee meeting a few weeks ago. And I know that maybe a couple of these are renewals, but it looks like maybe one or two of them is new and it has something to do with like the sciences. And I know that this is not necessarily curriculum, but it is instructional materials. So I think this, I think that we should have had some detailed discussion about this information within the, at least within the finance committee and in the, within the curriculum committee before it was brought here for us to approve through a financial lens. Because this, of course, it has to be approved with the sole source vendor piece through finance, but a lot of these, the questions that I have could have been, could have been answered within the finance committees and the curriculum committee. I'm not, I'm not prepared to move forward with this tonight. I mean, I know it's November. It can't be a huge emergency that we've got to have these instructional materials now because it's the middle, the middle of the year. I mean, maybe this is something that we should have been voting on back in the summer so it would have been in place for this year in terms of these materials. But I'm inclined to request that the board consider sending this back to subcommittees where we can hash these issues out before voting on something that's going to cost us $215,000 when two months down the road, somebody may say, well, I don't even like this tool. And somebody, they may name the tool and we're sitting around saying, what are you talking about? And we come here and ask the administration and the answers would most likely be, well, you voted to approve it. So we need to talk about this in our subcommittees before we bring it to the full board here.
God willing.
Erica, this is simply a rollover of products we already used.
This is actually the third year for these vendors. It's more than that for Identikit. It used to be that the individual schools purchased it on their own, so it didn't exceed the dollar threshold required for board approval. It didn't exceed the $30,000 because they, each school identified it as their own purchase, whether they wanted to use it or not. But since we've done it with the district, this will be the third year we've brought it before the board.
I appreciate that. And one of the things that I'd like to talk about in the curriculum committee meeting is have a discussion about how well this is working. Are there other options out there? Show us some evidence that it's working. And I'm not, my comments are not an indictment on anybody that's done the work to get it here. I'm really requesting that the board do more in terms of due diligence before just broadly approving these pieces without some initial evaluation and some ongoing reevaluation for those tools that already exist.
All right, Dr. Marion?
I have a couple of questions. Number one, what fund, Ms. Erica, did you, are you intending on using to pay for this from the district?
So that's listed beside each one. For Identikit is PRCO 24, which is DSSF, and the other three would be Lowell, PRCO 31.
Okay. And I'm assuming, and of course I somewhat recognize the name, we have, and you just answered my question, we've used them for a couple of years.
This would be the third time it's been brought.
Now, have you had requests from principals, quote schools, quote somebody that they want to renew this?
I probably would have to defer that. I know the Identikit, yes, because that's the system that everybody uses to get in. I know Kami and Learn Ed and Explore Learning, I know Dr. Carr has.
Do you have some information if they are, and schools have requested this, so we just automatically renewing it?
Hold on, I don't see you on here, Dr. Carr. It's not on. Yeah, I don't see, she's not coming on. There you go. Dr. Carr.
So with Kami, we got a lot of requests when they saw the renewal coming up because that is a tool they use to annotate a lot of the PDFs because otherwise you can't annotate. It also helps with our ML learners and our EC students.
Will you go back, those acronyms you're using, will you say what they mean for us?
Yes, so Kami is a product that works with any PDF, so any, it's a file that you can't edit, basically.
Like Adobe.
Adobe.
Okay, I got you.
So it's something that teachers can't edit, but it allows students to like write responses on it, have tools to help them respond to anything. It's a tool that we have a lot of teachers using when they're working with their ML students or multilingual students with their EC students. And so it is just a tool that's not a curriculum that they just use to help support those needs. And they've, that was an immediate request when they saw on their Kami pop up that it was going to expire. We got quite a few calls all across the district about that tool because it's been a tool that they were worried about they would have to pay for themselves. And so it is cheaper as a district for us to purchase it. It would cost us almost double the cost if each school had to pay for it. So trying to be more cost effective, continuing that use that way because that was a tool that was continuously used. Learn Ed is really some basic content that has not changed when we think it was on the original North Carolina approved list of materials that be used and thinking about cost. It is just background knowledge, it is not the hands-on piece. This is just to give the teachers those tools to help them continue providing the content piece because we're also purchasing additional resources out of other funds for the hands-on pieces like the kits and things. So this is more of, it's small little notebooks that you'll see that come with PowerPoints that teachers don't have to prepare, that they can use to help teach the content behind what they're learning when they're doing experiments. And Explore Learning is literally some of that hands-on piece, but it's done through an online platform that we've spent a lot of time learning how to utilize to more effectively implement those science engineering practices that are part of the new standards. And it's a tool that we've been trying to use for several years to get them prepared in preparation for the new standards coming. And so this has been tools that we use consistently in those classrooms, and we've received funding from the state that also supports Gizmos, but it doesn't support the whole amount to do that work.
One follow-up question, is there a usage report on these showing how much the teachers use?
So Learn Ed, no, there's no usage report because it's not anything that we can track. They have just booklets and PowerPoints that we, that platform does not provide that. And Explore Learning, I'd have to do more exploration and talk to our Susan to find out if there's actual report that we can pull for that one. But I do know that when we go in the classrooms, we see usage of that as part of what they're doing. But it has to be a combination of many different tools because of the way the new standards are.
All right, Ms. Christie Fields, you got?
On the Identikit, can we not use that system so that when visitors come in, they could swipe their driver's license so we're not asking people for background checks? And we can make it accessible for visitors to come in? Case in point, doing Read Across America, you want people want to come to read, but you want a background check. But then we can have PTO, we're not putting, we're not requiring people to have background checks, come to PTO. We're not requiring background checks for football games. So is this a, is this a software where we can manage visitors who come into the school where they could scan their driver's license and be able to, we would know whether or not is someone who could legitimately come in?
I'm not sure if we could get anything in that price point that would do that instantaneously, but we can definitely research that. My understanding with the Identikit is more for parents to sign in, sign out, to check kids in and out if they're coming to pick their child up. The other part of the visitor management system, maybe our schools aren't using it to the full extent, we can certainly research that, but it would probably be at a higher price point for that kind of instantaneous information. But we can certainly research that.
We just need something that's consistent because we're not being consistent across the district who we let in and out of the schools.
Right. And that management system wouldn't solve that. We'd have to have a bigger conversation with our schools on that. Yes, ma'am.
All right, we're going to have Mr. Terry, then we're going to, we got a, Mr. Terry, Mr. Craig, then we're going to move on.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Christie, because the construction and finance committee could have had these discussions before it was brought here. So that's another one, another avenue for us to hash these things out before they're brought in. And Dr. Carr said something earlier about some standards that are coming. Okay, I thought you, I thought you used the term coming, okay. So yeah, they were, they started this year, 2425 for science. And that's an interesting point because back at our finance subcommittee, we had a huge update about the new science standards, but I think it was Ms. Susan. So it's interesting that we had that update from her, but there was no mention, like I said, this was October 15th, just a few weeks ago, and there was no mention of this tool being on the agenda for our conversation here tonight. So I really think that we should kick this back to the subcommittees where we can get all of our questions answered, where we know exactly what we're voting on.
Mr. Craig, and then we're going to have a.
Okay, thank you.
Proven up.
Question, Ms. Erica, when you say these are sole source vendors, Explore Learning, is that the only company we found or it beat it on doing that work for us?
Those Gizmo licenses?
Yeah, we got, yes.
And that's part of the one that Dr. Carr was saying, the state pays for part of that. So the state already pays for us to have Gizmo licenses. So it wouldn't really make sense for us to use another company. We want to get the Gizmo license. So yes, sir.
If I go to the last one, the annotation tool, again, is that the sole source vendor, is that the only company that we found that we could get that service from?
That's the only one that has that specific part to it that we need, yes.
Okay.
And they have a letter attached that says that.
I understand what, I'm just maybe Mr. Terry's saying, but my question is like, if these are the only places we can get these services, I mean, I don't know what we can do farther with this, but we could look at it for some other things. But when it says sole source, and that's the only place we can get it, we got to go there to get it unless I'm not understanding it.
That's what sole source means.
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Let's do. All right, this is the action item, so do we, are we going to take action on Mr. John Simmons?
Motion, make a motion approve.
Motion being made by Mr. John Simmons. Approve the sole source vendors, Sentijix, Learn ED, Explore Learning, and Kami. And the second being made by Mr. Trey Britt, all in favor? All opposed? All right, can we, let's do a, I think the eyes have it, but let's go by short hands. All approve? All opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We have none too, and thank you, Ms. Erica.
Thank you.
Now we have fundraiser by Ms. Erica Sessner.
And I apologize, this wasn't in your packet before it went out. I had to get some information a little earlier and overlook this, but there is, you'll find at your desk, there was a fundraiser for Knuckles Elementary for Krispy Kreme Donuts.
Ms. Wondell? Mr. Henry?
So with their fundraiser, they have to show how they're raising the money and then how they're going to spend it. So they're going to raise it to spend it on the teacher appreciation.
All right, Ms. Krista Monroe, hit you. Ms. Krista Monroe? Hit the button again. I'm sorry, hit the button again. There you go.
Okay. I approve the WH Knuckles Elementary School fundraiser.
A motion's been made by Ms. Krista Monroe, a second was made by Ms. Christie Fields, all in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Now we have the monthly report by Ms. Erica Sessner.
And your monthly financial report was also included in your packet, and I can answer any questions anyone has at this time.
Ms. John Simmons? Hold up. Ms. John Simmons?
I'm sorry, has anything changed?
No, sir.
Make a motion approve.
All right. Well, motion's on the table to approve the monthly financial report, and a second being by Ms. Melissa Osha, all in favor? I know, okay. Now we got to have a discussion by Mr. Terry. Then Ms. Christie, you have your hands up too? All right, Mr. Terry, then Ms. Christie. Ms. Christie?
Yes, ma'am. Under the local funds, line item or code 802 maintenance, it appears we are spending a million dollars a month in maintenance. And I'm assuming that's district wide. Can you give me some clarity on why it's that much?
It's not a million dollars a month. We just paid our premium for our insurance and it is $532,000. So that's a one time a year. So it won't look like that next month.
Okay. And then my second question is on the renovations under Capital Outlay at 2.9 million. Major repairs, roofing. I'm assuming that's not an ongoing line item that we're going to see every month as well?
So 9100 actually puts a number of things together. It's major renovations, it's roofing, it's fencing, it's a lot of different projects in there. And part of that was a project where we paid, this career and technical school, where we paid and the county's going to reimburse us. So you'll see that as an expense. You'll see a lot of large expenses here, but we're going to get reimbursed from the needs-based lottery.
And you said this, part of this is the career and technical education school?
Correct. Those bills we have to pay upfront and then get reimbursed, or we pay it through our system and we request funding from the needs-based grant.
And then going back to 802, over $500,000 was for premiums. So typically, are we spending $500,000 a month in maintenance?
Typically, yes, ma'am. Our maintenance budget will probably be close to what our entitlement, our whole appropriations. It normally runs between 12 and 13 million dollars a year. And that covers all of our utilities, water, sewer, garbage pickup, some fuel costs, contracted services for different things in maintenance, including the lawn services.
All 39 schools.
Maintenance salaries, correct. Yes, yes, ma'am.
All right. Mr. Terry, like you still got your question? All right. Well, a motion being on the table by Mr. John Simmons, and a second by Ms. Melissa Osha, all in favor? All opposed? Thank you, Ms. Erica.
Thank you.
Ms. Melissa?
I move that the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robinson County go into closed session for the purposes of discussing certified and classified personnel, North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A1 and 6, and to consult with the attorney retained by the Board in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the Attorney and the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robinson County, North Carolina General Statutes 143318.11A13.
There's been a motion to come out of closed session by Mrs. Trey Britt. Do we got a second? Second by Mr. Craig Lyer, all in favor? I've got a motion to approve closed session minutes.
Motion to approve closed session minutes.
A motion being made by Mrs. Trey Britt. Second made by Mr. Henry Brewer, all in favor say aye. Motion to approve certified classified personnel as presented. All right, before we close, we want to look at some dates for joint construction and finance committee meeting. Want to look at some dates, throw some dates out there. Also, we want to look at a date for a retreat, a retreat here, preferably on a Friday from a 12 to 5. We come here on a retreat on a Friday from 12 to 5, have a board retreat. No, December. We looking at all this December, there's a lot of stuff going on, so I want to go ahead and put...
I was gonna say the earlier in December, probably the better.
Yes, I want to go ahead and say there are a lot of dates, stuff going on, let's go ahead and throw some stuff out there, Mr. Henry. All right, Mr. Henry did Mr. Craig.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to remind the board that we have a fall update policies on December the 3rd, starting at 9 o'clock a.m.
Okay.
So, as we plan to schedule these other meetings, we need to keep that date in mind.
All right. That's December the 3rd at 11 a.m.
No, 9 a.m.
9 a.m. Anybody have any dates? Board member, I mean, a board meeting for December is going to be Tuesday, that December the 10th. Or you want to do it before the 10th, no matter... The 6th, December the 6th. It's fine with me, we'll start at 12, we'll eat lunch at 12, be at 12, we'll start the meeting by 1 o'clock.
Yes, we make it work.
Because we do not want to be retreating everybody out of school.
That'd be the retreat for the board members, we'll come here, and it'll be here, we'll come here and talk about a lot of information that we need to get fixed out, get out for the board meeting. And the board meeting should be December the 6th, find everybody for the retreat, 12, 12 to 5. So, December the 6th will be the retreat here, from 12 to 5. Mr. Terry.
Will that be a public meeting?
Yes. All right, Mr. Craig.
I was trying to get all these ends, John and I, the two chairman, we looked at December the 5th for that finance construction, is that a... We could do that Thursday, and then do the retreat that Friday, is that a problem? I'm asking if that's a problem. We can't, we got, there's a conflict December the 3rd. We got a policy meeting that morning, if we, December 3rd is a conflict from that standpoint. Now, John, you say you couldn't meet the 3rd at all.
Yeah.
3rd too. Okay, if we did it the 3rd, you'd have policy that morning at 9, and then you would have finance construction that afternoon at 5:30. Which, if you want to put it all in one day, that's whatever members want to do. That's on a Tuesday.
What do members of that committee want to do?
Is it Tuesday at 5:30?
Yes.
So, that'd be December the 3rd, we have two meetings, we have the policy committee meeting at 9 a.m., and then at 5:30 p.m., we will have... We will have construction and finance.
Yes.
All right. Okay. Are we good? December the 6th.
12 to 5, we'll start with lunch, so be told, lunch at 12, meeting at 1.
Mr. Curry.
Let me make a comment, folks, before we adjourn. If you remember back on your sheets and certified personnel, first name on one of the sheets had resignation, and then it said unknown. So, I'm just saying somewhere along the way, let's figure out a way we can talk to these people here and at school. See if they'll give us some information, and it would have to be done down here, because now, it's like somebody said, somebody might be upset with the principal administration at school. And it'd have to be done here, but if we could figure out a way that we could get the person to come in and give us some information, I don't know if that would be in... You couldn't force somebody to do it, but just think about something that we might could do. So, we might get answers to why people might be resigning. And retirement, like I said, I mean, that's retirement, it's just retirement. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Craig. Do we have a motion to adjourn? A motion being made by Ms. Melissa Olson, a second being made by Mr. Trey Britt, all in favor?